Meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission will now come to order. Staff, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Funka. Commissioner Lau. Commissioner Gooding.
Here.
And Chair Sayasan.
Here.
And no further record that Commissioner Patel is absent tonight.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion is unanimous. Consent calendar, there are none for tonight, so we will move on to oral communications. If anyone wishes to address the commission concerning items not on tonight's agenda, you may do so now. I see no one in the audience, so staff, can you please display the call information and set a timer for one minute? And while we're waiting, does anyone want to remove an item from the consent calendar? No. Okay.
All right, 60 seconds has passed. I have no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. See, may I have a motion? Oh, no. Well, yeah, may I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar? I mean, may I motion to adopt the...
Through the chair, you do not need a motion for...
That's right. Okay, I'm getting confused, thank you. Okay, we're now moving to written communications. We received one correspondence from Brisbane resident Michelle Salmon regarding Item C concerning the Northeast Ridge. Next is new business. Tonight, we have a public hearing concerning 2000 Sierra Point Parkway Sign Review 2025-SR-02 and Variance 2025-V-01 is the SP-CRO district. David Ford is the applicant. HCP Life Signs REIT Inc. is the owner. Staff, may we have the presentation?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commission. The applicant is requesting approval of sign review and variance to the sign standards of the Coal Centre Sierra Point Building Mounted signage standards. I will refer to those as the sign program in this presentation. The request is required to allow a building-mounted internally illuminated sign that exceeds the maximum vertical dimension, sign area, and limit on lines of text in the sign program. So, the... Excuse me. The sign would be mounted to the mechanical penthouse screen at the southeasterly side of the building at 2000 Sierra Point Parkway, replacing the existing BioMarin sign. The business name Vera Therapeutics would be shown in two lines of text. The sign height would be nine feet, length would be just under 35 feet, resulting in a sign area of just over 312 square feet. The internally illuminated sign would consist of five-inch aluminum channel letters with white acrylic facing overlaid with two shades of blue perforated vinyl. So, the sign program establishes standards for sign size, vertical and horizontal dimensions for three zones in Sierra Point. This is to ensure that signs are roughly uniform in appearance from Highway 101, regardless of how close the building is to the highway. 2000 Sierra Point is in Zone 2 of this program. So, the Sierra Point sign program requires variances for any deviation from its requirements. There is an exception to that. It allows exceptions for hotel uses to allow two lines of text and to exceed the maximum sign size and vertical dimensions. That was an amendment to the sign program that was processed over 10 years ago. But again, it only applies to hotel uses. Any other uses are limited to a variance request in order to allow the deviations. So, in terms of the compliance with findings for approval, the application would comply. For the variance, the commission must find that the approval would be subject to conditions to assure that they're not issuing a grant of special privilege that's inconsistent with the limits on other properties in the neighborhood. The commission must also find that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property, such that strict application of the sign program's requirements would deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. In this case, the property's distance from the highway, combined with the two-line company logo, warrants special circumstances to justify granting the variance. Strict application of the maximum vertical dimension and total sign area in the sign program would deprive the subject property the privilege of having tenant signs that are clearly legible from view corridors on Highway 101, as other properties in the vicinity enjoy. The business Vera Therapeutics has not provided evidence that its logo is trademarked. However, the two lines of text are clearly integral to its corporate identity and appear in all of its public-facing materials. Redesigning the sign to contain a single line of text would require letter sizes to be significantly reduced in order to comply with the maximum horizontal dimension in the sign program, and this would impede legibility from the highway. It would also result in a sign that was visibly out of scale with other signs on surrounding properties, and that would contradict the purpose of the sign program to ensure that signs are uniformly of scale when viewed from the highway, regardless of how close they are. And finally, because the variance would be subject to the recommended conditions of approval in the draft resolution, approving the variance would not constitute a grant of special privilege. The commission has approved some similar requests in the past. We listed those in the staff report for reference. And then, in terms of the applicable sign review findings, the application would be all of them that are applicable to this application. The design of the sign would complement the building and that of the Sierra Point neighborhood. The blue sign colors would be consistent with the color palette permitted by the sign program and would contrast attractively with the white building finish. The letter sizing is also appropriately scaled to the size of the mechanical penthouse it would be mounted to. The sign would be internally illuminated and would not produce glare or otherwise constitute a public nuisance. And I'll note the conditions of approval require that the building permit plans show compliance with the Dark Sky Ordinance, which regulates outdoor lighting, including illuminated signs. With that, staff is recommending conditional approval of the application, subject to the findings and conditions in the draft resolution. And I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I just had a question. How, you know, for these variances, for these signs, how did the company come up with the dimensions, you know, the nine feet? Is that what, was that a proposal, or did they ask for some guidance in terms of like determining the height? Or the, yeah, just the size?
Sure, like, did staff consult with? Yeah. I think, well, yes, I mean, staff was consulted early on in this process. They applied for a building permit. So, there was back and forth conversation about what the sign program required and what they wanted to achieve with their signage, which, again, is primarily a legible sign that's of similar scale to others in Sierra Point. And so, that is ultimately what's driving the applicant's proposal and the vertical dimension they're requesting approval for. And it's to accommodate their two lines of text for the business name.
So, I mean, that nine... So, there's no calculation or some, there is probably some calculation of like, because the other variances were like 11 feet, but is there some, you know, maximum or just...
Well, I suppose the way to frame it would be that, you know, this is the height that they feel achieves their goals of having a legible sign from 101. Yes, other signs approved in the past were much taller, and I can't recall at the moment if that was in a similar zone to this one. So, and the applicant is here in the Zoom, and he can probably address that a little bit more when they make their remarks to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope.
Not really. It makes total, it makes sense to me, and I actually...
Through the chair, is your mic on?
I'm sorry?
Is your mic on?
Oh. I thought I was yelling.
Thank you.
It makes total sense to me, and the artist's rendition that you showed of the sign, it says, yeah, it's legible, and it's not offensive compared to the others. It looks pretty normal. I guess what they could have done, in theory, is just shrunk it to a size that does conform, right? And then, we would have had to, or they would have had to make the argument, well, if we do that, because there's two lines, you just can't read it from 101, something like that, you know?
That's essentially what the staff report...
That's what they say.
The findings that are discussed in the staff report address that, you know, in order to reduce the, in order to have the sign with two lines of text representing the business name comply with the standards in the sign program, it would have to be, the letters would have to be considerably smaller.
And just, yeah, okay. Yep, I, no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Gooding, any questions? Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak?
Yes, we have the applicant, David Ford. I'm going to allow him to address the commission. Okay, David, you should be able to unmute.
Okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, great. Hi, my name's David Ford. I'm the applicant, and I don't really have a lot to add. I mean, the staff report was very thorough. We appreciate all the help that Julia has given us on this project. We've had a lot of back and forth. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about the sign, but I don't really have anything else to present or to add to it.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have a question for Mr. Ford? I don't either. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Okay, Julia, why don't we set maybe a 30-second timer to see if anyone wants to call in?
Sure, let me get the slides up with the number. That's not the right one. There we go. Okay, great, and I've started a timer as well. And I'm sorry, how long was that for?
30 seconds.
30 seconds, okay. Okay, 30 seconds has passed. I see no hands or calls.
May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll show move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, discussion. Any comments or discussions from anyone? Okay, yep, I think it's pretty straightforward. Everything that's in the staff report that was presented, I think it was done very well, and I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to adopt the resolution proposed by staff, including the findings included in Exhibit A to that resolution.
Okay, in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, motion is unanimous. I will now read the appeals process. Anyone may appeal the action of the Planning Commission to the City Council, except where specified otherwise, appeal shall be filed with the city clerk not later than 15 calendar days following the commission's decision. Exceptions include appeals for use permits and variances, which are six days, and tentative maps and advertising sign applications, which are 10 days. An application form and fee are required. For assistance, you may contact the city clerk at 415-508-2110. Next on the agenda is review of the General Plan Conformity 2025-GPC-1 concerning the city's proposed acquisition of property within the Brisbane Acres. Staff, may we have the presentation?
Yes, thank you. This item is for the Planning Commission to adopt a General Plan Conformity Resolution declaring that the city's proposed acquisition of five properties within the Brisbane Acres subarea, which are identified in the agenda report, is in conformance with the city's general plan. A General Plan Conformity Resolution is required by the government code prior to the city's acquisition of land. In this case, all five parcels are located within the Brisbane Acres subarea, which has a low-density residential designation of 0 to 2 housing units per acre. The general plan land use element also designates a minimum of 40% of the land area to be in open space. That's a minimum. For a property to be dedicated to open space, land would have to be publicly owned. Consistent with that general plan goal, the city has been making efforts on an ongoing basis to acquire properties within the Brisbane Acres. This is primarily for endangered species butterfly habitat protection, but open space provides other benefits as well. To date, 48 sites within the Brisbane Acres have been acquired for establishment of open space, and this is consistent also with the San Bruno Mountain Habitat Conservation Plan, or HCP. The HCP was established in 1982 to address preservation of habitat for protection of endangered butterfly species, and that's consistent with the Endangered Species Act. The area of the HCP includes the entirety of the Brisbane Acres and extends beyond the Brisbane city limits into the San Bruno Mountain State and County Park, and also wraps around the city to the north. The city's acquisition of parcels in the Brisbane Acres in recent years, and this proposed acquisition of the subject parcels, is consistent with the general plan. It's consistent both a minimum of 40% of the lands to be in open space and with General Plan Policies 81, 90, and 91, which were outlined in your agenda report. And those essentially call for identifying and acquiring lands for open space. Also, the housing element has goals, policies, and programs for development of a significant number of homes during this housing cycle. None of the five subject parcels were included in that, the inventory of anticipated development sites, and that's due to their very low likelihood for possible development. They have various constraints, including lack of nearby infrastructure, roads, utilities, also very steep slopes, and the location of these lots within the HCP. Although City Council has not made a final determination to acquire these parcels, it has indicated intent to do so. They have scheduled next Thursday to consider this matter. So, in closing, staff recommends adoption of the General Plan Resolution 2025-GPC-1. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Funka?
Just a question for clarification, not, I think it's a great idea. I'm wondering, so are these, were these acres in private hands, and are they just acquired at fair market value or something like that, without having no, know the value at all? I'm just wondering what the, what the background is in that respect.
I, I don't know details on pricing, except I understand, I think it was included in the staff report that four of the parcels would be purchased, one of the parcels would be donated to the city. And I understand historically that the city has offered essentially fair market value for these types of parcels, which would not be comparable to a parcel, for instance, in central Brisbane that has development potential.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lau?
Just kind of, a few questions. Do you know, in general, do private sellers or parties, you know, just ask the city, you know, if they're interested in purchasing this, or is the city like actively searching for empty lots? That's question one.
I think it could go both ways, but I think the city has actively been pursuing parcels, and this has been the case really since the 1994 general plan, and that's why we have so many parcels already acquired, is we've actively pursued these kind of parcels.
And in part of the general plan, if they acquire, you know, certain properties, is there a timeframe where, you know, the city is like, has to hold those properties before like considering selling them? Because, you know, there are some properties that are adjacent to these properties that I think the city sold, you know, to a developer just, you know, even a few years ago, and so...
I'm, I'm not sure about a holding period, but I, I think those parcels that you're, you're thinking of were a separate, separate matter.
Yeah, the parcels that you're thinking of up on, off of San Bruno Avenue were prior Brisbane Housing Authority properties, and those were acquired from a private owner specifically by the housing authority to potentially develop housing that ended up not being feasible for the housing authority to do, and we ended up selling them to a private developer. But those sites were not acquired for open space.
Oh, right. So, that wouldn't, that couldn't happen with these, because these are sort of whatever in perpetuity, like open space or something, or habitat conservation?
Right, they, I'm sure they would have deed restrictions, and yes, the intent is really for these to be in open space. And three of the five are very deep into the Brisbane Acres, the upper Brisbane Acres. Two are a little bit further down the mountain, if you will, but, but they're still contiguous with other open space parcels that the city has purchased. So, it really just extends the city's acquisitions of open space with the intent that, yes, they would be in open space in perpetuity and not be sold.
And is there, you know, mentioned there's a goal or percentage of, you know, open space that the city would like to acquire as part of the general plan? Are we, you know, around 40, something like percent, something like that? Is there, are we, is the city close to, you know, do you know if they're somewhat close to that goal or percentage?
This is just eyeballing the map, and I'd say we're probably pretty close to that, but I, I haven't taken a measurement of that. And again, the intent is for it to be a minimum, so, so it's good news if we could go over that.
No, all in favor of this? Thank you.
Commissioner Gooding? Okay, I don't have any questions, so let's open it up for public comment. How about we set a timer for one minute? 10 seconds?
Oh, sorry. I have no hands.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Unless we have any further discussions, can I have a motion regarding whether to adopt the General Plan Conformity Resolution?
Should we close the public hearing?
It's not a public hearing, no. We can just, we allow for public comment, but since there isn't any, we can just, unless we want to have further discussions, you know, we could take a motion.
I'll move to adopt the General Plan Resolution as framed by staff, including the findings therein.
In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next is items initiated by staff.
There are none tonight.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to items initiated by the commission. So, we have two items. The first is minor modifications of single-family homes at the Northeast Ridge. And before we begin, in the interest of transparency, I want to disclose that I live at Landmark at the Ridge, and staff advises that they consulted with the city attorney, and my recusal is not required, since this is an agenda item that is informational only. Okay, staff, can you give us an overview of your report?
Yes, thank you. The Planning Commission-initiated item was agendized to, in response to a Brisbane resident raising concern about the zoning administrator's approval of minor modifications for single-family homes at the Northeast Ridge. The Northeast Ridge is a planned development and is located within the San Bruno Mountain Habitat Conservation Plan area. It was approved for development through the city's approval of planned development, design, and vesting tentative map permits, and consists of 499 housing units. Those were developed from the 1990s up to about 2015. There are three areas of the Northeast Ridge. Each is a common interest development, with HOAs responsible for enforcing the CCNRs. The final phase of development was the single-family homes at Landmark at the Ridge in the area where the applications for minor modifications have been filed. The concerns that were raised appear to stem from the zoning administrator's approvals of applications for certain U-shaped homes to enclose that interior courtyard, the inside of the U, resulting in approximately 200 square feet being added to those homes. The assertions have been made that the, the CCNRs do not allow for an expansion of the homes, also that such additions alter stormwater flow, creating hazardous soil conditions, and the resident also indicated concern about the potential impacts to the butterfly species in the area. As indicated in staff's memo, minor modification approvals to design permits and planned developments by the zoning administrator are permitted in the municipal code. Also, the authority to approve minor modifications is further provided in the conditions of approval for the Northeast Ridge development. With that vested authority, the zoning administrator has heard four applications for minor mods, and these date back to, the first was in 2007. Three of them were for expansion of the floor area for those U-shaped homes, essentially identical applications, and then one was for covering part of the patio. And the first was at Huckleberry Court, and it was appealed to the Planning Commission back in 2007, and the commission upheld the zoning administrator's decision to approve the application. There was no, no appeals filed for the other three applications. A copy of that 2007 report to the Planning Commission for 10 Huckleberry Court was provided for this commission, along with the minutes from that time. As I mentioned, the commission upheld the zoning administrator's decision in 2007. The details are provided in your memo, but essentially, the conclusions to come away with are that minor modifications are permitted at the northeast ridge. The CCNRs do not prohibit the expansion of floor area. Regarding stormwater flow, the applications were reviewed by the city engineer, the public works director, and no, no exceptions were raised. All four of the modifications are already on developed sites and not within the conserved habitat areas, so there's no impacts there. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or you can have discussion among yourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. So, yes, and we did, as I mentioned earlier, received a written communication from Brisbane resident Michelle Salmon, and it was her concern regarding the definition of what constitutes minor modifications, you know, which which allows the zoning administrator to make these decisions rather than it coming before the planning commission first. So that was her concern, and, you know, it I do have concerns as well, but first, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners if they have any questions first. Commissioner Gooding?
And one for clarification, and I think I read it, and I just want to make it clear for the record, did this applicant run this proposal through the HOA for that project and get the approval from that HOA?
Yes, all all four of those applications got HOA approval, and we require those letters to be provided to the city.
Thank you. I should also disclose, along with my fellow commissioner, that I live at a viewpoint at the ridge, which is not the same development, and but is subject to some of the same strictures as as Landmark and Altamar. It's a different different animal in terms of how they're set up, but we all should know that.
Thank you. Commissioner Funka, any questions?
My only one, but the history seems very clear. I wonder if there is, there does seem to be some discretion in the definition of minor, and I wonder if there is, you know, to what Michelle Salmon asked, is there an increase in floor area that would exceed like, oh, well, this is no longer minor? Is that an objective thing? Because every it does seem to be subjective in some ways, right? Like what what minor is exactly?
Right. So the municipal code, this is chapter or section 1756-090, provides that a minor modification means up to 20% reduction in yard area, which essentially, and this was brought up at the planning commission in '07, the director addressed that at that time, that reduction in yard area essentially is is the same as expansion of the house.
So actually, that confused me a little bit. Up to 20% reduction, that is reduction in the open space on the lot or something? It seems to me it reads seems a little counter.
It it reads a little backwards, I I think, but is reduction in the yard area, it essentially, you're increasing the size of the house to reduce the yard, so it's it's specific to that to that parcel.
Oh, I see, okay. So there is basically, I think what you're saying, now that I understand it, there is an objective definition of what constitutes minor?
Correct.
And this satisfied that?
Right.
Okay.
It was well under that. It's these are large lots. The the one in question, the appeal was over 12,000 square foot lot, and with a 200 square foot addition, it's like about 2%.
All right, I understand, thank you.
Commissioner Law?
Okay, so my question is, I I think Ms. Salmon did bring up some good points as to the definition of what constitutes minor modifications, you know, and she gave some definitions as to what is considered minor in terms of, you know, construction in California, and and it usually doesn't deal with structural changes, like significant, because I and 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 I think if you looked at an individual property, and you looked at, you know, the request to enclose their outdoor deck or patio, if you look at it, you know, and it's debatable, but I think, okay, let's say, one applicant, they're asking to enclose their outdoor space, and whether that could be deemed minor or not, structural or not, let's that's one issue for me. But then I think the other question becomes, and and I was looking at the the staff report from 2007 when this was first brought up, the commissioners raised the same concerns that, well, what if in the future, we get more applications like this? And, you know, this is a planned development, and they had a certain vision for it, and what if all the homeowners there, I think it's 88 homes, wanted to enclose their deck or patios? And, you know, so far, we've granted three applications. So at what point then does minor modification, if you look at it cumulatively, becomes major? Because, you know, it's possible we could get to the point where a third of the homes want to enclose their outdoor space, and then we're going to get to a point where, do we ever tell an applicant no? Because then we have set a precedent, well, we've granted a third of your neighbors the right to enclose their space, so how can we do that to you? But then, what if are we going to grant it to all of them, where it changes the nature of that neighborhood where these huge homes without any outdoor space, they're like these huge blocks? I mean, we're essentially, and and that wasn't, this is a planned development, and that wasn't the the intent at the time. And and while, you know, I I'm all for, I think, addressing each applicant's proposal individually, I am not sure if this is something that should go to the zoning administrator versus coming before the commission, which would allow people, I think, more opportunity for notice, for discussion, to give time, you know, time for people and neighbors to absorb what's going on. Because, you know, I mean, when the zoning administrator approved these three applications, and I remember getting a notice of that, and I think the planning commission gets, is it seven or 10 days to review whether, you know, they want to appeal that? And and I don't know if that's enough time for us to really, you know, to have to consider that, and also for the public. So that's my only concern is is, one, the definition of minor, because I I do have a concern whether this is a minor modification, and, two, you know, I think something like this should should come before the commission, rather than, you know, to go first to the zoning administrator.
I did some really quick math about this. If it's a 200 square foot enclosure of sort of U-shaped space on a 20, 12,000-foot lot, it's a 1.6% change or reduction in the yard space. I would venture to say that if every building, if every structure in the development wanted to ask for a 1.6% reduction in their yard space, I'm hard pressed to say that that rises above the definition of minor modification. That seems to me almost the definition of a minor modification. I I think we're stuck with stuck with, we are faced with whatever the the ordinance defines as the the discretion and scope of the zoning administrator to make certain decisions. That's what the law is. But I'm hard pressed in this instance to say that that's not a minor modification. Under the circumstances of this particular case, and even if you apply to the entire development, it's 1.6 of the entire development. And if every structure, every lot is subject to the same criteria of what is minor or not, based on this 20% issue, they're way below that level, and I I think.
I think.
Sorry.
No, okay.
One more paragraph. When they're asking for variances, I think, you know, we do on a case-by-case basis, but I think our responsibility is say, well, what if this became, you know, rampant? What if it got, you know, if it went project-wide? For this particular kind of change, this particular kind of modification, my my two cents worth is as one of five, one of four tonight. It doesn't just doesn't rise to the level that that really, you know, sets off warning bells or red flags to me.
And I guess if if you put it that way, 1.6 percentage, it seems small, but I guess I I guess I would like to see a visual. I would like to see the home, you know, and I would like to see that once it's enclosed, how would it look? And I would like to see maybe a rendition of, let's see, if a third of the homes, how they appear now, if they were all enclosed to that extent, what it would look like, you know, so it's that's why it's, I am not saying I would be opposed or or not, but I just think it's something that maybe should come before the commission so that we could really take time to reflect, and 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 I don't know. I mean, you know, I would like to hear from an expert. I mean, if if a certain amount of homes were to enclose their outdoor space, would it affect, would it affect water flow in that neighborhood? I don't know. I would love to hear, you know, someone comment on that. So that was my concern. Anyone else?
Just prompted by by Commissioner Seisun's comments, I'm wondering, let's say that the approval of of things like this, minor modifications falls in the purview of the, you know, the person who could approve it without coming in front of the commission. But we, there is a concern that it changes the character of the development, which I think is your concern. If everyone did it, does it change the character? Whose whose concern is that? Is that the HOA's concern? Like, who who's in charge of the overall appearance of a planned community? Isn't that the people who live there? Does that is the planning commission concerned? I'm just wondering about that. What is our interest in the character of planned development like the ridge?
Well, I think I think with a lot of things, you know, sure, the HOA would have to approve it, but I think practically speaking, when we all get notices about things like this, who really looks at it, or who really has time? So that's why I think if they were given a form, a notice and a format, a forum to come before the commission, I think that's just a little bit more opportunity, rather than, I don't know, if they get mailed letters or emails about what's being proposed, and I don't know who really looks at those. So, you know, it's it's just more about just, I think, notice and opportunity was was the issue for me.
May I add one more point? I it's a good point that that Arul made, I think, is what, you know, what interest does the city or this commission have in this particular decision process? And I I think I would suggest that the interest of the city or this commission and the planning department has respect to these developments, which were, you know, controversial in their day and had a lot of public debate around them, was not solely, but largely, the environmental impact of of these developments on the surrounding habitat, on San Bruno Mountain, on the HCP program. And so I would suggest that that's probably what should be the focus of this commission when we choose or debate whether or not to intrude on the decision-making process of the zoning administrator. You know, when and why and how do we do we do that? And is this one of those cases? There are pictures, by the way, there are renderings, by the way, in the in the file of what the change would look like. Very broadly, it's like a U-shaped structure, and they're taking the little inside of the U and enclosing that. And as I understood it, it makes no impact on the slab, because it's the front, the entrance to the place is slab anyway, and it's just basically putting windows and walls around that slab. So I suspect that there's no water issues, or it would have been pointed out. And I'm not advocating for the homeowner here, I'm just trying to to apply whether this kind of application triggers the kinds of concerns that the city has above and beyond what the HOA would have in terms of of the strictures that were put on these developments in the first place, which were largely primarily, not solely, but primarily about environmental impacts.
And that seems that seems objective to me, it's like, not so much the character as like, if you could demonstrate that if everyone did this, it would have a significant impact on something that you could model, that that would make sense to me.
Can I ask staff, so throughout the city, if any home in the city were to request the same modifications, it would go directly to the zoning administrator?
No, this 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 procedure applies to design permits and planned developments, but most homes can make an addition of various sizes, as long as they fit within the the development regulations. So if you had a 2,000 square foot home on, say, a 5,000 square foot lot, you can, and this is in the R1, you have a .72 FAR, you can increase that to 3,600 square feet.
I I see, so because this is this is only an issue because this was a planned development, and they were there was a certain vision in place, and now subsequently, certain applicants want to change it. Okay, understood.
Okay, well, any other comments? Okay, then let's open it up to see if anybody would like to call in and comment on this issue.
How much time would you like to give?
Let's do a minute.
Okay. Just FYI, I don't have any attendees in the meeting right now. So anyone watching on YouTube or on TV can call the number on the screen.
Ten seconds.
Okay. Okay, a minute has passed, no one is wishing to address the commission.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, so there's no more discussion on this issue, then we will just move on to the next one. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Brisbane municipal code violations and code enforcement. Staff, can we have an overview of your report?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. The commission had previously requested a update on how the city processes code violations in terms of finding and penalty opportunities, and what can be levied. The little memo we put together outlines those particular penalties. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have regarding the memo.
Okay, anyone want to start? Commissioner Funka? Any questions? Commissioner Law?
So there's one, there's one member that, I mean, one, you know, one person that checks these violations, right, and does follow-up, I take it? Is that?
Yes, we have a code enforcement officer, yes.
And so like, if somebody reported, you know, a violation anonymously, or whatever, you know, through the website or in person, and that officer goes out and, you know, inspects, you know, that whatever's occurring, is there usually, what's what's the process like afterwards? Like, they usually do some follow-up, you know, depending on Like they usually do some follow-up, you know, depending on what the infraction was, if there was a violation and, or, you know, those parties have to go to City Hall to submit a permit? Or, you know, or is there some follow-up? Like, you know, does the officer go, you know, return and after a few months to see, you know, if anything's, you know, been, you know, changed?
Uh, yes, there is follow-up. Typically, if it's, I mean, it's going to depend whether it's ephemeral, whether it's an activity that is like an immediate nuisance, will be treated differently than something that's illegal construction or an illegal use that occupies property over time. But for those which are primarily building and zoning, which is the ones we see most often, typically, the property owner and potentially business operator, operator are given a notice to correct. They're given 10 days to take action to, to abate the violation. Assuming the code enforcement officer has identified a violation has occurred. That means they need to file a permit application. If they do take the proper steps to abate the violation, any sort of enforcement action is stayed until they go through a process. If they fail to, to respond or take timely action to resolve the violation, then they'll move on to a citation phase and they can be cited. And then there's, in the municipal code, there's a graduated scale for citations. If they fail to, to act, you know, you can do multiple citations and the fee of each citation increases over time.
Thanks. So, I assume that since there weren't any citations issued, like in the past year or, or longer, that any, you know, violations were met in a timely process?
I think that was on, in the context of planning. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say there've been no violations or no citations issued. That would be, I mean, there are very few, maybe relative to the number of cases that are initiated, but I would not say that all cases are abated without a citation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gooding? Okay, so. So, I understand from staff's report that even in 2005, we've had some serial violators. You know, and they're given, I guess, warnings and whatnot. And then, I guess ultimately, they're in compliance, but there's been no penalties issued against any of the serial violators this year, correct?
That's my understanding. Ken, I know you had an applicant, a planning applicant. Maybe you can speak to that particular case. Industrial Way, I believe.
Yes, on Industrial Way, you heard that use permit recently, which was essentially what the impetus for this report is. And, and following that meeting, staff sent a notice to the property owner to essentially put them on notice that, that the city would be charging an additional fee. We let them know that we could charge up to 10 times and, and we won't necessarily start at that, but if they continue in a pattern, that it would be accelerated. And so it could be a substantial fee that their, that their prospective tenants would presumably bear the brunt of that. But it's their, you know, we, we don't know what tenants are coming in until after the fact, but they can communicate directly with their prospective tenants that they need to make sure they have all applications in, in place and relay that information. So, they have been put on notice.
I guess, I guess my other question is, you know, when, when applications come before the commission and we put conditions of approval in it, and I guess there's an expectation that the applicant will meet those conditions. So, but it seems that unless whatever is being violated is significant enough or impacts health and safety, the approach of the city is to not really issue any penalties. You know, even, even after multiple violations, I guess. So, I, so I'm having a little problem trying to, to just kind of.
Through the chair, could you just clarify? I'm not sure what your, what your assertion is right there.
Well, I mean, okay.
People are violating their conditions of approval routinely or regularly.
Yeah, so, so if someone violates a condition of approval, so based upon staff's report, it says, unless it's, it's affects the health and safety of the city or the resident, usually these are, you know, they'll get warnings or if they do a second or a third, I think, violation, we're not really going to impose penalties?
Well, I mean, I, I guess we're talking about two different things. Penalties are typically related to activities to correct the violation. You have a violation, I'm going to file, I need a permit to correct this violation. The penalty comes to the permit fee. That's where the, the penalty comes in. Instead of charging a regular building permit fee or planning permit fee, you can charge 2X or 3X or up to 10X of the permit. That doesn't absolve them of the need to cure the, cure the violation. They still have to, they have a citation. Maybe they got a warning and if they move forward in due diligence to pursue remediating or correcting the violation, they will not receive a citation. Because again, the point of the city's enforcement program to date has been to achieve compliance, not necessarily to, to collect fines from people. Encouraging compliance and that's, that's been the city's historic strategy of obtaining compliance. But if people fail to comply, then they're subject to fines, enforcement fees, citations. That's, I'm not quite sure. And if we're talking about planning permits, I mean, obviously Google's has its own history, as we all recall, the Google Bus Yard. That's, I think, a very unique one project to issues of non-compliance. And I think, as we're well aware from processing that permit, there were opportunities to tighten some of the planning procedures to ensure that people can't just wiggle around in terms of what the conditions say versus what they have received approval for. You know, so those procedures have been tightened internally among the department in response to what happened at Google.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that came to my mind because I remember they had to come before us a, a few times because I think they were not complying with the conditions we put in. I think for a certain route they had to follow or certain operating hours. I mean, I don't recall it all, but I do remember there were repeat violations. So, and, you know, at that time, I felt like as a commissioner, you know, thinking, well, what do we do in that situation where, you know, someone, you know, continues to violate the conditions, you know?
Well, I mean, I think the, the big club the commission always retains on a discretionary permit is that permit can be revoked and they will be required to cease operations. And that's, that's in any discretionary permit that the commission has control over. That would be the nuclear option. If a project is a, you know, habitual violator, create any sort of unacceptable health, safety violations, that would be, that would be the commission's club to deal with those sort of operations.
And, and staff feels that this is, this is the preferred approach, I guess. I, I mean, I'm assuming we have to hire people to check for code violations and this and that and the city has to, you know, spend money doing this. So, um, is there any thought to, well, we should try to recoup some of that, you know, expense from people who are violating and start, you know, implementing these fines?
Well, I mean, that's probably a council policy, policy decision. If they want to take a different code enforcement tact, you know, obviously that could have implications that may have not been thought through in terms of what you do to, because you have issues of people who make innocent mistakes. They're unfamiliar with city rules and regulations. And, you know, so there's always going to be that issue of if, if the city wants to come down really hard on everybody all the time, well, that's certainly the council's policy and prerogative. But what are they really, what is the city's end goal within a compliance and code enforcement program? Is it to achieve compliance or is it a revenue stream? And I don't, certainly, so to date, the city's taken the position that it's to encourage and get people to comply with regulations, not punish them necessarily.
Okay, thank you, John. Any other questions?
I can just, this is more of a comment than a question, I guess. I, I take your point, John, that, that it's a complicated process and the innocent folks who just, you know, mess up and don't, don't get it fully and make a mistake should be probably given the opportunity to get inside the tent and, and comply with the process. That's fine. But I, I do really get of a different mind entirely about serial violators. And, um, I don't know if it's feasible or if what we want to do is just simply to send a message to the council that this is an issue they might want to look at. It's not within our purview to, to change the, the fee structure of, I don't think it is, change the fee structure, the, the penalty structure of, of the Brisbane code about violations of, of permit rules. But perhaps simply to flag an issue of serial violations, that's my two cents worth.
Anyone else?
Again, would like to point out that we do already, I've seen that as building official. We have seen that imposed on serial violators of the building code. Other than the project Ken identified previously, that has not been an ongoing planning applicant issue. And, you know, certainly my peers there who are in the, in the chambers can correct me or let me know if there are other projects they're aware of that are habitual serial planning violators. Because frankly, planning via, planning sites typically one-offs. They're not, you don't have a lot of planning applications that span multiple properties. Like you do a contractor who works on many buildings, for example, or people who do building work across multiple sites. That's much more common, the issue of a serial violation.
Right, yeah.
It's more a building problem than a planning problem.
Understood. That's a valid distinction, I, I see what you're saying. Thank you.
I had one, one question triggered by that. I, I think the philosophy is fine, you know, just to, your goal is compliance and not revenue. In the case of the industrial avenue, industrial avenue, right, that, that was in, someone who was operating a business and they came themselves, they came forward, right, and said, oops, we're operating without a permit. I think that was the circumstance. I don't think it was a case of them being caught. But I'm wondering if there is, first of all, maybe you can confirm that. And second of all, I'm wondering if there is a systematic, how do we make, does the city in general, what's your procedure for making sure that people are up to code, that they're operating under code? I'm, I'm sure you have permits on file. Is there a way that people go around and say, oh, this is what we have on file, this is what's actually happening? And is that done on a regular basis?
Well, defer to Ken on the specifics of the Industrial Way property. But typically, 80% of planning permits, let's say 80%, 90% of the conditions are associated with activities that can be verified through a building permit issuance, that prior to building permit issuance or prior to occupancy of a structure for a particular use, these conditions need to be met. So, that's how we verify 80, you know, 85% of the condition. If there are operational conditions, let's say, you know, you can't operate past 4pm or, you know, you can't do this or that, those are typically enforced, like all city code enforcement occurs on a complaint-driven basis. City doesn't have the manpower or the staffing to just routinely monitor, you know, the hundreds of permits, planning permits that are actively being implemented over, you know, 40 years, 50 years. It's just not really a practical use of city planning resources at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Just to confirm, your recollection of the Industrial Way site is correct? They, they came forward.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, um, well, let's open it up for a public comment. And why don't we, I don't know, one minute, Julia, to see if anyone wants to call in? Okay, I'll put one minute on our timer. 10 seconds.
No one wishes to address the commission.
Thank you. Okay, so are we done with this discussion? Commissioner Gooding, did you want to follow through with the city council on anything? Or should we just leave it as is?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. Okay, well then, is there anything, any commission would like to address on any other topic? Okay, well then, I will consider this meeting adjourned until the next regular meeting of July 24th.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Um, we're actually going to cancel that meeting.
Oh, you're going to cancel?
So, you can cancel that and adjourn to the August 14 meeting.
Okay, we will cancel the July 24th meeting and the next one will be August 4th, you said?
August 14th.
August 14th, 2025. Okay, thank you.